Good evening. My name is Arlene Miller and it's my privilege to welcome you to this edition of Our Town. Sort of a fall tradition in Long Meadow is that I get to interview the town manager, Stephen Crane, my guest, about our special town meeting, which is another tradition in Long Meadow. Annual town meeting in May, special town meeting sometime in November typically. And so our special town meeting is coming up. It is on November 7th at 7:30 at the Long Meadow High School. And as part of that, there's business to be done. And the business is called the warrant. And the town department heads have all gotten together and brought to us some issues that have to be decided at the special town meeting on the 7th. So what we're going to do today is go back and forth about the issues that will be discussed at the special town meeting. There are 19 articles. A lot of it's moving money, not money laundering, but moving money from stabilization accounts, from water retained earnings accounts, from the general fund, raise and appropriate would be the general fund. And at the end of the day, we'll be spending money, we'll be moving money, and we'll be helping the town move forward with special and important issues and projects. Fair?
Yes, and I would, to clarify, it's officially called the special town meeting, has been forever, but it also gets referred to as the fall town meeting because we do one of these every fall.
Since you're here. Typically.
Typically, yeah. I mean, I think when you go back and look at historical warrants, they typically had the annual big show town meeting in May, and then a fall town meeting, which is generally reserved for financial cleanup type issues, things that have happened during the budget year. The free cash gets certified by the State Department of Revenue after annual town meeting. And so there's, you may put some away into stabilization, you may need to spend some on a project that has come up, somewhat either unexpectedly or unexpectedly. And you may, and the other thing is, a recent tradition is addressing zoning and general bylaw changes that are recommended, simply because most of the annual town meetings usually have so much business in them, it's tough to...
And it's early, it comes quickly.
Yeah, it comes quickly. So it's tough to get these bylaw discussions the time they're due during the annual town meeting, as we just had a two-day annual town meeting. I don't think...
Let us not forget.
Yeah, I don't think we want to do that again. So that's why these go to the fall town meeting. But there are, at times, special town meetings that are not the normal fall town meeting. And I know one of, having a special town meeting has been discussed for a zone change for the Brewer Young Estate. I just want to let people know that that's not on this warrant and that meeting is as of yet unscheduled as of airtime.
The other reason we used to have a fall town meeting is often, it wasn't unusual back when I was involved in the government, the state would have not adopted a budget. And you didn't know what kind of revenue you were going to be getting from the state. And I think this year, you probably had that a little bit sooner.
That's correct. A lot of times when the budget is approved in May, there are unknown revenue variables. And so sometimes tweaks are made to the current fiscal year's budget based on, you know, changes.
Good things or bad things?
Good things, bad things. A few years back, there was the change on the floor to the budget at annual town meeting that caused town meeting to adjourn with an unbalanced budget. And that fall, the budget was corrected to be balanced at the fall town meeting. So things like that are fairly commonplace.
In this case, it's a lot of stuff in here. I know Stephen says it's a piece of cake, this isn't too complicated, but to you and I, the residents, there's a lot of money moving, as I said, reading it, it's like a civics lesson, in the different pots of money that we put aside to be fiscally responsible. Stabilization funds, it's harder to move money out of stabilization funds than into stabilization funds because that's what it is. It's a savings account, let's keep it, make it harder to move. And some of these votes last year, last year's bills are nine tenths vote. Zoning changes require more than a majority vote because it's a big deal in the town. So you're going to hear a lot of that, it's really kind of fun, you can hear a lot of that during this discussion. But we have 19 articles, we're going to go through it, it's everything from community preservation, everybody feels good about that, to marijuana.
I think some people feel good about that.
That too. But that's very interesting. Okay, it'll be fun. So the first article is about the community preservation, in which we, each of our residents contribute to that through a community preservation tax, a 1% on their tax bill to the community, and it's matched by some amount by the state. And then there's some guidelines about pockets that some of that money has to go into, and that's a town meeting vote. That's what this is about. Completely housekeeping, 10%.
Every year, we do the same thing.
Well, it's mandated.
It's mandated. Instead of these housing, open space, undesignedated, there are certain accounts that CPA money must go into, it's Arlene who serves the CPA committee as well.
Open space and recreation, community housing, and historic preservation are the three pots.
Correct.
Everything else is undesignedated.
And so you have to, and they're based on percentages of the funds you collect.
Right.
And so you have to put them in their proper slots.
10% in each.
Right.
And it's the same amount of money in each pot. And then the community preservation folks can review requests and all that money gets back. So that's, number one, it's kind of a friendly...
People should really go, should look at the Community Preservation Committee reports.
On the website.
Even in the time I've been here, the CPA has done some amazing work on town buildings, town facilities. So I think it's, you know, even though we're talking about this as kind of a no-brainer administrative thing, what comes out of these funds is usually some pretty notable projects for the town.
Well, the projects that wouldn't get done were it not for this special fund. I mean, this is not for salaries, it's not for employees, it's not for police vehicles, it's for these kinds of issues that we just talked about. And it's often those issues that are put aside and only if there's a lot of money coming into the town that you don't know what to do with. But this helps us save, address those issues.
Yeah, like the Blinn Tennis Courts is a good example, that was predominantly funded with CPA funds. And if we didn't have those CPA funds, you either wouldn't have new tennis courts, or you would have to reduce other expenditures, like services and employees, right, to get that done. So, and I marvel even on a cool day like today, people are out there playing tennis every day. Those courts get used significantly, and so it's a great benefit to the town.
Yeah, and that's just one of the many projects that they've been able to contribute. So it's a good thing for Long Meadow. It's a conservative pot of gold, but it's a pot of gold. So number two is the nine tenths vote. You want, you go on?
So this is paying bills of prior years. You know, we work really hard to close out our books with all the bills paid at the end of the fiscal year, usually.
So the fiscal year is July 1st to June 30th.
Right. And on June 30th, all of your encumbrances have to be locked in, and then all the bills and everything have to be paid usually by August. And then we close the books, so to speak, on the fiscal year, you know, September, you know, late September, early October. But there are times where a bill, or an invoice, or something, either doesn't get submitted by a vendor, or there's a dispute about the work, or something like that, and it doesn't get paid, and we realize it later on. And it takes a four-fifths majority vote, or nine tenths, to pay it. So in this case...
That's because it's an unusual situation, so it's nine tenths.
And this is one of those ones where it's coming out of water retained earnings, and it's a large amount of money, it's $108,000. But this is really for the water, it says the city of Springfield, but it's really the Water and Sewer Commission, which is not the city of Springfield, it's an independent commission. But they have this thing called a true-up, where we estimate what our wholesale water consumption is going to be in our purchase from them. And then after a certain amount of time, we calculate based on the metered experience how much we did, and that true-up just came late, and so that's why we need to pay this bill after fiscal, from fiscal year 17.
So what we're doing is, we paid the bill out of water retained earnings, and then we're paying water retained...
Like most things in the budget, we guess ahead how much water we're going to use, and depending on, you know, with our irrigation systems in the town, you know, depending on the dryness of the year, certain variables, the amount we project in budget and purchase may end up being different. And then they go back and they, like I said, do a true-up based on the actual metered consumption.
I get that. But so this, what I don't understand is, were we paying it, we paid it from water retained earnings, or are we going to?
We have to pay it from water retained earnings.
And we don't have the money in that?
We do...
The bill came in, but when did the bill come in?
The bill came in sometime recently, but it was from fiscal year 17, and fiscal year 17 is closed out.
So it came in after July 1st?
Yeah, it's the prior fiscal year, so it came in after the books were closed.
Even if it's being paid from water retained earnings, we still have to do that, that's okay.
Correct.
Okay, great. Don't want to belabor that. Three is legal expenses, an increase of legal expenses.
Yes. It's been a busy year in that regard, but we're...
Mostly doing with zoning, you're saying, and health.
We've had a few health-related cases. I think, you know, our legal team helps us through many challenging and complicated issues. And as people know, lawyers are not inexpensive, but they are, I think our legal team is worth it. They protect us from greater liability in the future. So we just, we've had some issues come up that we did not plan for in the budget.
So it is interesting, in a town like in Long Meadow, which seems so peaceful and nice and beautiful, that we have these issues, disputes over zoning, and the health issues are complicated.
Well, and the health issue is related to, like, an individual resident who is having an issue that our board of health director has had to intervene on, and it has had to go to court.
Housing court or something.
Housing court to help manage the situation with the property owner. And these are far more common than I think the average resident would normally believe.
That's right.
But they are, they are common.
Yeah, and unfortunate.
And deeply unfortunate.
Yeah. Okay, four is the purchase of what?
A little bit of short-term debt.
Oh, debt.
So we did receive the debt exclusion vote for the DPW.
Oh, yes, sir.
We are incurring expenses on it.
Townyard.
However, we have not put in place the permanent financing, and probably won't until we do, until the project is bid. But we do, we're doing what's called bands, or bond anticipation notes. They're basically short-term loans with very low interest rates that we use to cover temporary expenses, and then we roll that debt into the permanent financing.
And how are things going with the project?
Very, very well. We have...
Do you want to give 30 seconds?
Sure. We are cruising through design development. We are going to get, I would guess, construction documents, you know, 90% design completed by the holidays, and we anticipate bidding the project in February.
Is the building still up or down?
The building is still there. We are still working with the former owner on removing some belongings that they had.
Oh, okay.
And once that process is done, we will look at demolishing the building in advance of the general contract for the overall project, or keeping of the general contract.
So that's, this money isn't for that?
No, we've been incurring design expenses and things like that.
Yeah, great, okay. So five is a little bit more complicated because it's got some press. This is about the purchase of a vehicle.
So as some people may remember, on March 14th, we had a terrible accident where the life of one of our DPW employees was claimed when the truck he was plowing went in, was hit by a train. Obviously, the truck was a total loss. And so we have to, we want to replace the vehicle because it was one of our larger dump trucks that plow our main roads. Laurel Street, Converse Street, Dwight Road, Long Meadow Street. It takes a bigger vehicle to push the snow further to the side on the larger roads than it does on the smaller roads. And we do lease, we have started leasing vehicles instead of buying bigger dump trucks. In fact, this year, we're releasing two vehicles, but the leasing company doesn't offer a vehicle large enough to adequately do the mains.
And so you lease those, are they just seasonal leases?
Seasonal leases, sure.
Oh, good.
In fact, we usually hold off until we know that we're going to get snow to actually sign the lease paperwork.
This year, you might not get any.
Right. Last year, we saved a bunch of money because we didn't lease it till, I think, late December, early January. So we do that, but it just, there are times where we just need bigger vehicles with greater salt storage in the...
Beds.
In the salt machine. So we only got about $70,000, or $62,000 on our insurance claim, the truck was a 2007. It got some press because we, the DPW, had originally proposed replacing the truck with the same-sized vehicle. And then we found one available on a lot nearby, which is rare, because normally you have to have these trucks built for you, and it's six months lead time to get it, even after you've bought it, you still take six months to get it in hand. We didn't want to lose two plowing seasons by waiting to go to annual town meeting. Some of the discussion was about the fact that we did not bring this purchase to the capital planning committee, and in hindsight, we probably should have discussed it with them. But we were replacing a vehicle that had already been approved by capital planning back in 2007, and obviously, it was not a scheduled replacement, and I think we all wish we did not have to replace the vehicle. So we did clarify that with the select board. The select board did change the language in the warrant after there was some initial discussion about it. And we ended up reducing the size of the vehicle and buying, basically, if the truck that we had was an extra-large, we're replacing it with a large in furtherance of a fleet management plan that was done back in 2012. So the fleet management study had called for replacing some of these larger vehicles with slightly smaller vehicles.
Sure, good, cheaper.
So, and they're a little bit cheaper. And like I said, we were just looking to replace what we had with like, but, you know, the select board, you know, pointed out the fact that it wasn't what was called for, and they were correct. And so we made the adjustment, and we are looking to purchase a smaller vehicle.
So the interesting thing about this is it's not just something you're taking out of the general fund, you're taking the financing from the capital stabilization fund.
Correct.
And that's why it's a two-thirds vote. So it's a little complicated for the residents to understand that. But I'm curious that there's that much money in the capital stabilization fund.
So every year, we put a contribution into the capital stabilization fund as a part of our capital plan. I think it's $35,000. We put $25,000 into our project development fund, which is to usually pay engineers or architects to help us develop capital applications. And then we put, I think, 35 in the capital stabilization account. And we do that because there are times where capital projects either come in, are bid higher than the amount we appropriated based on market changes or, you know, things in the design that weren't sufficiently developed to, you know, reflect the adequate price. Excuse me. And that stabilization fund is to protect us against either something happening during the project that...
There's additional money in it.
Yeah, it's basically a savings account that you use for capital projects that either come in over budget, or there's a change order in the field, yeah.
It's a cushion, okay. And so the amount coming in of capital stabilization is a small amount of this amount.
Right.
It's only part of it. But that's why it's a two-thirds vote.
And this is a, the truck is a capital...
Capital project, okay. Now, the interesting thing is, it's not recommended by finance committee, and I'm sure they'll speak to whatever their feelings are about that, and you think it's because it wasn't approved by capital.
My understanding is because it didn't go to capital planning committee, but again, we viewed it as a replacement of a vehicle that had already been approved.
Right, okay. So, number six is one of my favorite articles, and that is a policy from the select board that if we get more than $500,000 in our bank account, our general fund, that we move the rest of that into an operation, operating stabilization fund.
Our free cash.
I mean, from free cash into the operating stabilization fund. And that's just a little bit of a savings account, kind of thing.
Right. It's important for the town to build its reserves. Ideally, you'd want to get to 10% of your expenditures in reserve. We're probably closer to 6%. There's two and a half million, or I think more than $2.5 million in our operational stabilization. So $265,000 is a meaningful contribution to that account.
And the great thing is, you don't just let it sit in the free cash, you put it in a safe place. So it's not tempting to just willy-nilly spend it, it's in a safer place. But my question to you earlier was, how do you know how much that number's going to be when we haven't finished this meeting yet, where money's going to be spent? And you can...
You take the amount of free cash we have, and then you subtract the articles that we're proposing.
And you assume, you assume a clean sweep at the town meeting.
And whatever doesn't end up being spent just gets carried over into the next town meeting as free cash, and at that time, it can be put in operational stabilization, or it can be spent on another need.
Sure, okay. So seven is, this is a routine thing, but it's sooner than usual.
Yeah, it's not necessarily a routine thing. We have two ambulances, and in the past, we have operated one primary ambulance and had one in what we call reserve or backup status. The chief Dearborn has had proposed in the FY18 budget, a reorganization of the fire department to be able to run two ambulances at once. And that was something that was approved by me, the select board, and town meeting. And that really is to meet a very, a significantly growing demand in ambulance calls due to an aging population. And so the real, and the other thing is, the ambulance, running the ambulance generates revenue. So we have an ambulance fund that gets capitalized by Medicare or private health insurance for people who get transported to base state, or have an emergency call, or something like that. So there is a revenue opportunity in running both ambulances.
So if it's a fender bender, you send out both of them at the same time?
It depends on the situation.
Okay. So it's not automatic that they both go out the door?
It's not, no, no. Usually, one stays back to cover the next call. So if you do have an accident, say, on 91...
When you say having two ambulances, you mean available at all times, not necessarily going together every...
No, we mean going, no, not going together to calls, but one going to this call and another going to that call.
That's what you mean, okay. That's not the way it came out.
Yeah, oh, okay, sorry. So, yeah, they, it's, to be able, to be able to serve the town better, with better ambulance coverage, so we don't have to have a mutual aid or a private ambulance company come in. We provide, I think, a much higher level of service than any other ambulance company in the area.
So AMR is not necessarily, that's the...
I'm not going to mention any names, but I think we provide a higher level of service than any ambulance company.
I'm familiar with them all.
And the data really shows the need for more ambulance coverage. And like I said, it generates revenue. And so the warrant article is to replace a 2005 ambulance that really is in a state of serious, you know, decay, really. It runs, it's safe, and if it comes to get you, don't worry about it. But it really is getting to the end of its use life, and it takes, again, six months to get to one of these vehicles. And so we're proposing replacing it now with ambulance fund revenue and some general fund revenue that will be paid back.
But typically, you plan for this.
Yeah, we do plan for this.
Does this plan for this in the ambulance fund revenue?
Yes.
And it's about a $260,000 purchase, from what I'm guessing?
Correct.
And so you have 130 available now in the ambulance fund, but because this is coming a little sooner than the planning process, you're going to borrow from the town and then pay it back, essentially.
Correct. Yeah, the only reason to do that is because of the length of time it takes to get one of these vehicles. If there was a place where you could just get them off the lot, we wouldn't need to do this. But you have to, the manufacturers build them on, build them to suit for each, for each community. And so we need, like I said, six to eight months, and fire engines, a whole year, these are a little less than that, but still a long time. So we can't wait for the second ambulance to completely die before we get a new ambulance.
Which would not be a good thing for the town.
No, it really is at risk of being able to provide service to the community.
So interestingly, also, I just need to point this out, this is also not recommended by the finance committee.
They view this as, again, a capital planning item, but the capital planning committee views its role to really review general fund capital items.
Because this is coming out of the ambulance fund, basically.
Yes. I mean, you really have to look at our fire department as both firefighters and an ambulance company, like we're running a business, an ambulance business.
No question about it.
And so the, even though I typically do present everything we're doing to the capital planning committee, they have, their response is usually, it's an ambulance thing, it's not a general fund thing, it's not in our jurisdiction.
But this is partially, it almost looks like general fund because you're borrowing from the general fund to pay for, pay for part of it. It ordinarily would come out of 100% of the ambulance, but you're going to pay it back.
Correct.
So it's really an ambulance fund thing.
And ultimately, the capital planning committee is advisory to the select board. They're not an approving body, and so if the select board...
And to the town meeting.
Right, and to the town meeting. Well, no, actually, the capital planning committee is advisory to the select board. The finance committee is advisory at town meeting. And if the, if the select board decides that it can make this decision on its own, then that's within their purview.
But they can't make the decision without the town meeting, that's all I'm saying.
Correct.
Yeah, so it's ultimately...
It's ultimately, it's all the decisions, but this was one that the select board reviewed when we did the budget process.
It's coming before the town because the select board approved it.
Correct.
Even though the finance committee did not. And that's all I'm saying.
And I think that it's a fair point about capital planning, but like I said, I've been dealing with the capital planning committee, I know those guys well, they do a great job. But this is something that I've heard them say, this really isn't our thing.
So we need more definition.
Correct.
Good, okay. So nine is transferring money from the water retained earnings because of a water main break?
Yeah, we had a big one on, I believe it was on Elyway.
This is, this is actually just moving money, this isn't complicated.
This is, it washed out the side of the hill, and it was a very expensive repair beyond what we normally could carry in our kind of maintenance and repair budget.
Okay, so 10 is interesting, and I wanted, we wanted to spend some time on that. And this is to deal with, let's see, I forgot. Oh, the tower, the water tower, the cell towers, to be able to use revenue. We get, how much have we got a year from that?
So we have, the base rent is about $36,000 a year, and then they're going to get co-locator fees, so I've been...
So every time they add a different company, you get more money?
So...
This is just the one that I'm burning, I mean, on Ponside you're talking about?
No.
This is a different one?
This is a different one. So we have, we did a request for proposal, and we entered a lease with a company who is, who's going to seek permitting and local approval to construct a cell tower right next to our Blinn tennis courts, which sort of in the mix with the football light towers and some of the other, and the tennis court light towers.
So you're not going to see it too much, is it?
You really, I mean, it's...
It's kind of bland.
It's 150 feet tall, but I think when you're standing there on the ground, it's only going to look 10 feet taller than the light towers that are already there. It's going to be, as it's currently proposed, it is basically a giant flagpole. So it's not one of these ugly things with the, a monopole with the antennas kind of sticking out off, like Ponside does, so...
Oh, okay. It's not going to have the fake leaves on it, no?
No, it's not a fake tree. So that would stand out.
Yes.
So, but it's something that, you know, I think that the first thing is that if you have a cell phone and you live in the center of town, it's very difficult for you to make a phone call in your house.
Yeah.
So cell service in the middle of our community is poor.
Yes, the green is terrible.
Yeah, I mean, I can barely use my cell phone in my office. And so, and we get a lot of people who call, especially people who are new to town and don't want to get a landline, that they can't, you know, make cell calls from their house.
So this is going to work for the green, this from this, that location?
Correct. Yeah, I think, and Verizon has been talking to us for a long time about this location because there is a service gap there. I mean, everybody wants the iPhone X and the 4G, 5G, or whatever the latest thing is. To be able to run that piece of equipment, you need service, and to have the service need the tower.
So the only issues here are, if it looks terrible and people are going to be upset with that, but the good news is, the town gets revenue. And so the issue here is about the revenue.
So there's improved service, which is...
Of course, that's nothing to put it up.
Yeah, I think that there's a safety component that people need to realize, if you don't have a landline, you have a cell phone, and something goes wrong in your house and you try and call 911, and you can't get a signal, that's an issue.
Yeah.
So the second thing is, it is revenue for the town. I do think there are going to be people who feel like this is not a good thing for the community.
Because of this location.
Just because it's changed, and it's in the middle of our, it is in the middle of our community, but I think it's one of those things where if people keep some perspective, both visually and...
But it is right near the tennis courts, it's not by the high school.
It's right by the tennis courts. In fact, it's a small--
It's in the woods by the tennis courts.
Yeah, I mean, in fact, I think, I think they're proposing only take down one tree or two trees.
So smaller than the one down at Ponside.
Yeah, it's a very, they have a small little house, if you will.
How many layers can they put on it? I mean, you want to put as many as you want, as you can.
Right.
Because that's more revenue.
So I don't know that answer off the top of my head, but the more they put on, and again, they're all going to go within this, the equipment's going to go within, inside this flagpole.
Okay, okay.
Except for two whip antennas that are reserved for public safety on the top.
Okay.
So that's the other thing, they give us free public safety access to it as well, so we'll be able to improve our public safety radio coverage as well. So anyway, improved service, revenue, and what we're proposing is to dedicate that revenue to maintenance of our grounds, and that is grounds around our town buildings, around our schools.
Which we're having trouble funding.
Correct.
To the--
Playing fields.
That they need to be--
I get constant complaints about the condition of playing fields and the parks.
So let me be clear, this is, this article is not asking the town's permission to put the, to put that up.
No.
That's a different process.
That's a different, it's already, the lease has already been signed.
So, and zoning and all that stuff is all--
Has not happened yet.
But that's, that's, so that's the process.
Right.
There is a process, but it's not this.
Residents will have a chance to express their views on whether or not there should be a cell tower there during the permitting process of the tower.
With the zoning board--
And the planning board, right.
Planning board, right. So this article simply has to, is saying that money, that's, that revenue, is, instead of going to the general fund, is going to be all of that money?
Well, it's going, yeah, we're creating a special revenue account, and it's going to go into an account.
Dedicated, not to anything the DPW wants to do, but specifically--
For grounds.
To grounds.
Right. And again, that's parks, playing fields, grounds around our, the landscaped areas around our town buildings, because it, you know, our DPW grounds division does a, I think, a pretty good job--
Maybe we can then have recycling on the grounds, and we have a special dedicated one, be good.
So, they do a great job with the resources they have, but I think that they are probably an under-resourced division.
That division of all is going to be the lowest on the totem pole.
Right, and so I think that, you know, we have a lot of complaints about our playing fields, so this is something that, if this is approved through the permitting process, the revenue will be, it'll be a dedicated revenue stream for that.
Great, great. So we want, we want to get going because he's giving us a signal already. So 11 is, what's this for?
So this is to cover a budget expense that we've incurred on plan due to a health of an employee, a long-term health issue for an employee.
Okay, no issue on that one.
We brought in a temporary employee, so we haven't filled the position with a town employee.
So 12 has to do with the revow?
Yep.
And getting some more hardware and software for that, that happens to be three years by Proposition 2 and 1/2 regulations.
It's a requirement of the Department of Revenue.
And so I'm surprised this didn't come, go with the special annual town meeting.
I think the upgrade was something that was revealed to us--
Later on.
Later on.
Okay, so that's not a big article. 13, I want to get to the marijuana because I think that's interesting. 13 I love because you're going to--
It's the way you say that.
Yeah, oh, wow, don't take-- So 13, go ahead, what is that?
So this is basically, we refinanced the high school debt, and we're going to end up saving $3.2 million over the term of the bond, I think it's a 25-year, 25-year term, maybe?
This is saying going through 2041, is that possible?
2041, yes.
Yeah, wow.
So a 20-year term on the bond, we're just going to save more than $3 million on that, it's 100,000, 130,000, I think, per year in debt service savings. So the refinance really is going to be a huge benefit to the town, however, you know, if you pay off a car loan or to get it, or if you pay off a home loan to get a new home loan, sometimes you have extra payments you have to make in that transition time.
Sure, and that's what this is.
That's all this is.
So this is a no-brainer.
Yep.
Okay, so 14 and 15 go together. Interesting to me that one of them is a zoning bylaw, and the other is a general bylaw, both dealing with exactly the same subject. Why do we have to do both?
So the, as you know, the, a couple of years ago, there was a ballot initiative that was successful to legalize recreational marijuana use.
In the state, state ballot initiative.
Correct. It actually, the town actually voted no. More people voted against it than for it in Long Meadow.
Right.
The ballot initiative and the implementation of it got very confusing, so the legislature and the governor got together and wrote new laws to help facilitate the implementation and give communities better tools.
It was a confusing--
It was very confusing. So they stepped in and clarified it and gave communities, both who were in favor of it and against it, better tools to manage the implementation of the ballot initiative. Because we voted no on the ballot, the town can impose a, the Select Board by themselves can do a one-year moratorium, but the town can do a permanent ban--
Had we done that, a one-year moratorium?
No, we had not. We were focused on this because I think the community had made it clear that they wanted to have this as an option. So if these articles fail, the Select Board can still do the moratorium. But we, I just felt, let's just go ahead with the--
This is clean, and this is for--
One-time, and do it right for the first time, and it'll be on the books for the long term.
So what does it mean, so this is simply to say, the recreational stuff cannot be sold?
People can grow it in their houses, they can smoke it in their houses, they can do whatever they want.
As the law provides.
As the law allows, it just says we're not going to have storefront marijuana sales.
Right, not even medical marijuana.
That's a separate--
That's separate.
This is just retail, recreational retail use.
That's what I wanted to be clear.
So, the reason why this is a general--
I need to clarify this.
The most confusing part of all of this is there's a general and a zoning proposal. The Attorney General has not determined whether or not the recreational, the retail sale ban should be a general bylaw or a zoning bylaw.
So we're doing double dip?
So they've advised town council--
Do both.
Do both.
Okay.
And so we're doing both, but they are virtually the same thing.
So does this prohibit it forever?
Yes. Well, you could go back and change the bylaw, yeah.
Nothing's binding forever, as you would say.
Correct. Yes. Any government action can be undone by another government action.
Government action, that's exactly right. Okay, so that's, that brings us to 16, and now we're into the zoning bylaws, and I find these sometimes to be confusing, but I'm sure you can boil, boil them down to three or four sentences very easily.
Article 16 is what we call, for shorthand, an infill lot bylaw, which we don't have.
A small lot.
Infill is different than small.
Okay.
So, there are places in town, and there's really not that many, so we're not talking--
So I've never heard that word.
Infill?
Yeah.
So basically, what happens is you have subdivisions or neighborhoods that are built out with smaller lots and smaller houses. And then over time, you know, some years even before zoning may have been put in place. And then communities adopt zoning that require larger lot sizes to build a single-family home, and you may have in these neighborhoods, a house, a lot that was not built before the zoning was put in.
Right.
Or a house that gets torn down and isn't rebuilt right away.
Right.
And, or a house that's been vacant for more than a year, so it loses that pre-existing non-conforming status. And so you have these vacant lots that--
Zoning is complicated.
It's very complicated. We spend hours--
Yeah, this is complicated stuff.
Developing these bylaws.
But very, very important stuff to the character of the community.
Very important.
Very important.
So you have, and we have a few of these that the grass gets overgrown, trash gets on them because the people that own them may not be in town, and they are the same size and shape of every other lot on the street, and all those lots have houses on them. But because of our zoning bylaws currently, it cannot be built as a, as a home.
Because it's too small.
Because it's too small under the rules.
Okay.
And so this gives the zoning board of appeals some discretion to allow--
Building.
Building a house, but there's a conformity part of this where someone can't put a giant house on a posted stamp lot. They have some subjective criteria--
So the setbacks remain?
Yes, there are some objective criteria that the ZBA has to follow in the proposed bylaw. Now, there's some, it's their subjective interpretation of those objective criteria, but basically, it has to be the similar size and shape of the lots that are already developed, and what gets put there has to be a similar size and character of--
Well, that's, that's very subjective.
Yeah, but I think it's, you know, it's really simple, it doesn't look like the ones around it.
Fair and reasonable, fair and reasonable. 17 seemed to me had to do with pools, we, a lot of people want to put in pools? This is New England.
Yes.
That's strange.
I know, people want to put in pools, and our setback requirements for pools are fairly large under the current bylaws, 30 feet from the side yard setback. I mean, it's, there are lots that are narrow.
Yeah, but you have to, don't you have to put a fence around a pool?
You must put a fence around the pool, and that doesn't, this does not change that at all. This just says if you have an angular lot, or you're, you know, it's pie-shaped in one direction or the other, you can still have a pool in your backyard.
Does it have to be an angular pool?
It does, but that's, if you had a 30-foot setback, there are a lot of lots in town that can't, can't have a pool of a reasonable size and still meet that 30 yards, sorry, 30 feet each side.
Right.
So 60 feet on either side of the pool, you may have a pool that ends up being, you know--
So what's the setback on this one?
Let's change it to 15 feet. And then it gives you 10 feet from the house.
And this has gone, the report from the planning board is required?
Correct. The planning board's having a hearing tomorrow night on these, having a public hearing tomorrow night.
Okay, and they will speak to each of these at the town meeting.
Correct.
And that's important because, so we don't know, they may vote against it.
They may.
Oh, that would, that would influence, that would be interesting.
Right, they can report unfavorably on that.
Sure.
That's happened before, and sometimes--
These things, these don't necessarily pass.
Well, sometimes they pass, sometimes they don't. Depends on the mood at town meeting.
That's right, oh, always. That's why you need to put it on your calendar and come to the town meeting. Okay, so 18, and I don't even understand what this is, is this about residential window signs or commercial windows?
Commercial window signs.
Just commercial, okay.
So, if you visualize the shops, under our, under our zoning bylaws, you can have a blade sign and a sign on the, mounted on the facade. But a lot of stores, especially on the shops where you're walking and you're looking in the storefronts, they have sort of vinyl sticky signs they stick to the inside that may say Starbucks or--
I live--
Yeah, they're not, not the ones that say like sale or like temporary signs, they're signs that may say, you know, Gap. And they're there as an identifier of the storefront.
Yeah, and there's also one above it.
Correct, there's a blade sign above it, that's allowed under our bylaw, but there's no provision in our bylaw to allow these window signs.
Okay.
And most of them are tasteful.
Is there a size, is there a size limit?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And so that, most of our, you know, most of the storefronts actually currently have them, and they're tasteful usually, and they actually are helpful for people who aren't looking up, people usually looking in the window.
Right.
And so we just wanted to have something in our bylaws that define those signs and put some limitations on them.
So this is a zoning bylaw, though?
Correct.
So it's a sort of a site and design review kind of thing, element of a site and design review?
It's a zoning bylaw, but it, but it's, this is something that gets approved by the ZB, by the planning board in site and design review.
Right, and so this also is a 2/3 vote, and there will be a report of the planning board. So the last article, not to, is the biggest financial one, except for the moving the money for the high school bond. And so this is for $760,000-ish dollars to improve, I'm guessing, Forest Glen, Long Meadow Street, Converse Street, and Laurel intersections.
Yeah, the--
Big deal, huh?
Well, the expenditure of, I shouldn't say expenditure, the money has already been appropriated to a special revenue account by town meeting in May.
And the money came from?
Our arbitration award in the casino, in our surrounding community process that we went through with MGM.
Is this 100% of that money?
100%.
And this is a one-time upfront?
So we received $850,000 one-time upfront, and then we're going to get $275 a year after they open.
For how long?
15 years.
Good.
So, we've already spent some of the $850 because we've started design on Long Meadow Street on the improvements. Under our surrounding community agreement, we are obligated to upgrade Forest Glen and Laurel, and Long Meadow Street, Converse and Long Meadow Street, and Converse and Laurel Street intersections. As you know, we've had work done on Converse, Converse Street got completely redone, they did not go all the way to Long Meadow Street, that's this project. And they did not go all the way to Laurel Street.
Right.
So between Laurel and Long Meadow Street is a part of this project that we're planning, we're actually just hired a designer to work on this now. This is really a, when you talk about all the different accounts, well, the Department of Revenue, which is a state agency, ultimately oversees and approves all those types of accounts. We were told, we thought, that this money should be put into a special revenue account because it is really obligated to that purpose in the arbitration award and our surrounding agreement.
You don't want it to be spent willingly.
General funds, you know, free cash.
Come and go.
But they were going to put it into free cash. And so, we put it in a special revenue account, we were told that you cannot put it in a special revenue account, so we have to vote on it again, and this time we are just appropriating it--
So people have seen this before?
Yeah, so we're just now appropriating it for the actual project. And I, and I just want to make sure people are clear, it's a, the surrounding community agreement is a contract between us and MGM that an arbitration panel determined was going to be the official agreement between the two parties. And so it's not like a thing we feel like doing now, it's, we have an obligation, a contractual obligation to perform these, now, the improvements are needed, but this is what we said--
Will this be enough money?
No, not to, I mean, the improvements are millions. So that's why, and this is a bit of an aside--
Well, it's an important aside.
Right, so the project is probably about $3 million bucks. And again, we just hired a designer to really figure, to, we have 25% design, but we just hired a designer, and design is going to be a couple hundred thousand dollars, I mean, it's a big, these are big projects.
There's three very important intersections.
Correct, three are probably of the most important intersections. The cost to do them, so the, so we have $750, and that includes the design fee, so we were, we've held off on proceeding until we start receiving the $275 per year, because then, because then we would bond the project and use that $275, that annual money from MGM to cover debt service. But we're also applying to put this project on what's called the Terretts Motation Improvement Program, or the TIP.
TIP, yeah.
Which is, Converse Street was done through the TIP, so the state gave us $4.5 million and they managed the project, or they gave us. The state allocated $4.5 million to Converse Street, they managed the project, and then those are big, big projects.
Yes.
So if the state approves this project on the TIP and takes our $750 as a part of the town's contribution, then we can use the $275 for other purposes.
Yes.
But we don't, we won't know that for probably another year.
Right, interesting, and I imagine they will approve it, that's a, that's a worthwhile project.
It needs to be done.
Yeah, necessary, necessary project.
It needs to be done.
Okay, so, how, just one more question, and then we can wrap this up. How are we doing financially? I mean, it looks like you're, you come, every time you come before the town meeting, you're spending, doing these huge projects, there's the Dwight Road project, there's the Converse Street project, not to say that those are all from our pot of gold, they're from creative pots of gold, but--
So--
You're entering the next budget season already.
Correct, yeah, I mean, it's, budgeting is year-round.
Well, it slows down a little bit, and then it picks up.
The act of writing the budget is, you know, a few months, but budgeting is year-round. We've had attrition, and we have outsourced positions, like not hired a fully benefited town employee to fill that position, we've tried to do it on a contract, it's basically--
You're doing everything you can do to keep our costs down.
Right, we've had contracted positions that the service, the service wasn't adequate to meet the needs, so we've turned that into a town position, I mean, these are, but those are, they're policy and operational decisions, but we always look at them through the lens of what's the impact on the budget. So to answer your question, how are we financially, we just had our bond rating reviewed as a part of our refinancing of the high school, and we have a AA2 bond rating, which is very high for a community of our economic profile, and we were not put on a watch or a downgrade or anything else, a stable--
I would guess not.
So it's AA2, stable rating, and that was just done last month. And so, as far as Moody's is concerned, we're doing very well for a town of our size with our level of reserves and everything else. And so I think, every year, you know, we manage to make it work, and I say we, it's, I think, you know, Paul Pesterzak and the Select Board and Town Meeting and the School Committee, we had a joint meeting with the School Committee, we laid out where we think the budget stressors are and where we think, you know, we're projecting a deficit, but last, the last three budgets, I'm, one of the things I'm most proud of as town manager is we've worked with the schools and identified areas where we need to improve spending for things that benefit the schools as well, and the schools have been cooperative in maybe reducing spending or not going for something they needed. Free full-day kindergarten was something they felt really strongly about, so the town made the adjustment in the budget.
Right.
So, but we went into town meeting in agreement.
Yeah, I'm just, it's, it's, it's nice and healthy for me, at least, not to hear you moaning and groaning about, oh, it's going to be an operational override. Well, we keep, always keep waiting for the, the sky to fall, and it's because you're, I mean, you're starting now, this is October, to have those conversations, and you're doing all these other creative things, I mean, saving money on the bond at the high school, that's got to have an impact--
Yeah, I think--
On the budget.
So every year we go into the budget, and there's one thing that is always consistent with me, and that is, I do not believe in budget, in balancing the budget with the use of reserves.
Right.
So taking $100,000 of free cash--
It's not an original idea of yours, but it's a very good one that you're sticking to.
But there are towns that do use free cash to plug--
And we have in the past.
The town has done it a lot in the past. The town has done it a lot in the past.
No question about it.
But it's something that I don't believe in because I don't believe you fill recurring expenses with one-time money. And even though we have free cash seemingly every year, in principle, it is one-time money for that year.
Right.
So, we've been fortunate, like I said, I think decisions, operational decisions we make during the year allow us to, put us in the position to do this. Department heads, you know, we have turnbacks and people say, why do they turn back money? The other thing we don't do is, we don't Christmas shop in June.
That's right. Well, they used to, we used to all the time.
So the police car, which was one of our items, you know, we're, we're using Ford Explorers now, where we used to use Crown Vics. Well, we're kind of coming out of that first generation of Ford Explorers and we wanted this, it's really an emerging history on how long they last compared to the Crown Vics. Everyone knew Crown Vics 100,000 miles and they were garbage. And so 100,000 miles, you replace them. We found you're getting more miles out of the Explorers. So, when we did the budget, at the time, one of them had 130,000 miles on it, the police chief asked for three vehicles that he needed. In the town manager's budget, I presented two vehicles. However, I said at the time, if this third vehicle that should be replaced, that has the lesser amount of mileage, starts to go bad, we will come back to you in the fall and ask for an appropriation at town meeting to replace it. We knew in May that that vehicle was going bad, and he requested, could he take some of his money that he was turning back from his budget and buy it? And I said, no, it should go to town meeting.
Yeah, good.
We don't do that. It's not, it's not a transparent thing. You need to tell the people what they're, what you're buying, and if you said you're going to buy two cars in a year, then you buy two cars in a year, and if you need another